Good evening. Uh, what's today? October what?
Seven.
October 7th meeting will start time is 7:00 AM? PM? Yeah. AM, I wasn't even awake. On March 14th, 2020, in response to the COVID-19 pandemic and efforts to reduce the risk of transmission by virtual attendance, public meetings, government LaMonte suspended in-person meetings, meeting requirements, and permits to be conducted public meeting remotely by conference call. Uh, copy of the full text of the executive order number 7B1 is available review at Town of Monroe's website. According to Town, according, accordingly, the Town of Monroe has selected go-to-meeting as the preferred technology to conduct this remote public meeting in compliance with executive order 7B. Uh, the technology will permit 250 members of the public to participate in a real-time in the public meeting via computer, tablet, smartphone, tele, uh, what is it? Telephone via access information for the agenda. Highly recommended that when you participate, download and utilize the go-to-meeting software applications which are available in the meeting link below prior to the commencement of the meeting, of each meeting. Each meeting may have unique participation information, including access codes and phone number and live link. Please be sure to access correct information. Um, with that being said, we'll do the pledge of allegiance. We stand? Pledge of allegiance?
United States of America. To the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There's no way Mike reads all that. No, I read it just as a quest. Huh? Let's call the roll, starting to my right.
Dominic Smirgolino, alternate.
Dominic Bonicio, alternate.
Ryan Condon, secretary.
Leanne Ambrosi, commissioner.
Bruno Maeni, vice chairman.
Robert Westlin, commissioner.
Nicole Lupo, alternate.
Rick Schultz, town planner.
Donna.
Manager.
Stash Strad reporting to the committee.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, we need to designate an alternate for, to sit tonight.
Oh, hold on, I can see who's up. I think it's Nicole, but I could be wrong. Uh, let's see, who's seated last? It's like, uh, so Nicole was actually seated last on July 1st, so you're out. Dominic would be up.
Which one?
Which one? There's two. Uh, it would be, because Dominic replaced Ron, who goes after, actually would be new Dominic. We'll go new Dominic Smirgolino. You will be seated tonight. How do you feel? Great.
Thank you.
We good?
I'll do today.
The seventh.
Uh, general part, general public participation period. So at this point, is there anything on the agenda that, or anything that's not on the agenda that the public would like to discuss? Anybody? Anybody? Okay. Who's that?
This is Dave B. Orkland.
Hi, Dave.
Good evening, folks.
Oh, hey, Dave. You're coming up next for the, uh,
General appoint.
Oh, okay. I, I thought you wanted me on this part. Go ahead. Proceed.
Thank you. So I'm not hearing any? Done. General appointments. Dave, go ahead.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. The, uh, Dave B. Orkland, uh, I'm a professional engineer with an office in Monroe. And, uh, this evening, I'd like to discuss an amendment to the regulations, which we plan on coming forward with. And this actually goes back to a little over a year ago when my clients, who were proposing to purchase property at Commerce Drive, and they have purchased it. Uh, their business is total pool and installation. And, uh, what they had come forward a little over a year ago, was with an amendment to the regulations to allow introduction into the I-2 zone, the, uh, the contractor's business clause be included as a permitted use in that regu, in that zone, subject to a special exception permit. It, just a little background, it seems to me, uh, and it appears that the commission at the time thought that it was a little unusual that the contractor's use would not be allowed in the I-2 zone. Uh, this is a pool installation company. They're not an excavation or a, a construction company. They don't own any equipment. They're just simply an installation operation. And the commission, uh, back in September, uh, a year ago, agreed with them, uh, to come forward uh, for a text amendment to the regulations. This would be an amendment to 10.1, which is the chart, which, you know, cites, uh, permitted uses. So it would just be a simple amendment of the chart to permit this, uh, in the I-2 district. So what I'd like to do is, you know, bring this forward, uh, at a meeting in the near future, to, uh, have this text amendment made. So I said, my clients own the property and they're anxious to come forward, uh, and improve the property. I'll be glad to answer any questions that anyone may ask.
Dom?
No questions.
Dom?
No question.
Right now?
No questions.
So you're gonna bring your own text amendment? Yeah. Are you gonna, you could bring your own in just text amendment to change it?
Well, the, uh, we had hoped that, you know, in, in the past, that we could bring this in with a, you know, one of the general amendments that the commission through Town Planner has been doing. Uh, but in, unless there's something, you know, immediately on the horizon, uh, we plan on, on filing a, uh, for a text amendment, uh, and just coming forward. As I said, my clients own the property. They're anxious to get going. Uh, we'd like to get this, you know, approved in the near future and get the buildings, uh, under construction. So to answer your question, yes, we'd come forward almost immediately. If the consensus this evening is affirmative, come forward with a, an amendment.
See, I want to bring this to the subcommittee. You just want to bring it forward.
Well, you know, I understand and I, that there, there are new members, uh, to the commission. If the commission wants me to come to the subcommittee, I'm more than willing to come. The, uh, just let, let me know when the meeting is and we'll be there. Uh, but I, I think this is, you know, it, like I said, it's been to the subcommittee. It was, you know, it was, although it was a year ago, it was thought it was a good idea. It's a simple change. I'll, I'll do what the commission wants me to do.
Okay, that's all I have, Dave. You good? Rob?
Yeah, just as a refresher, can you elaborate on how you'd like to see the amendment written?
Well, the, the amendment, I mean, th, this is as simple as it gets. If you look at 10.1, the schedule of permitted land uses by zoning district, in that chart, it says whether something is permitted, uh, or it isn't permitted. And then it goes on to say if it's a special exception permit or it's not. And what we would come forward with was, would be to modify 10.1. And as you, and under the I-2 zone, when, uh, they talk about the contractor's use, just, uh, make that a permitted use with a special exception permit.
Pool installations.
Yeah, there, there's no, uh, you know, there, there's probably no area. The text amendment would be changing an X in that chart into an SCP in that chart.
Okay, thank you.
No questions, thank you.
I'm good also. Rick, anything?
No, I think Dave is pretty clear. It's, it's just, uh, a simple changing the X to an SCP in the I-2 zone. No, no other comments from staff?
What's not allowed in the I-2?
Right now it's prohibited, right?
Prohibited. So what's the standards for contractors yard?
Uh, yeah, well, uh, I'll, I'll provide a, a narrative on that on the commission. There's, uh,
Yeah, that's what I would wear, look at all that and then before we decide.
All of those factors will be discussed after, after hearing. I think he can proceed with this, with their own petition.
Um, what do you guys think? Bring it forward?
I mean, they're gonna come in front of us and yeah.
All right. Dave, I guess we're good to proceed. So if you wanna, you don't have to come to the subcommittee. Is everybody okay with that? Or do you want them to come to the subcommittee? Well, no, I just wanted to get over the contractors yard, see what it, what, what it entails.
Yeah, staff will send that out as a separate, so you, you can read it.
I understand that, but there may be some standards that we want to change in that, no?
Yeah, no, you're right. You want to look at it, so.
So, subcommittee, yes or no? I always figured that we just do it in the subcommittee and, and this way we can hash it out before we bring it to the full commission. I, I don't, you know, there's some stuff that we may have to look at to decide that.
Well, you know, I envision, I envision this as being the same as the contractor building trades establishment that is permitted in the I-2, uh, the I-1 zone, is we're just gonna permit it in the I-2 zone. I'm not proposing any changes to the requirements.
We have to look at those.
You know, I'm, I'm, I'm not gonna look, look for anything that would be different than what is currently permitted in the I-1 zone. I'm ju, I'm just gonna be asking that it be permitted in the I-2 zone.
Yeah, Dave, I, I think that the commission just wants to look at everything comprehensively to see if other language needs to be tweaked.
So you're, you're,
I mean, I'm, I'm more than willing to come to the subcommittee.
But, so you would want to bring this forward on the 20, the meeting on this is on the 21st, correct?
That's too soon for, uh, for a public hearing.
Okay, so then,
It'll be in November.
Okay, so if you're gonna bring this forward in November,
We'll have time.
We'll have plenty of time to put it through the subcommittee.
Okay, that sounds good to me.
So then let's, uh, I guess we'll, someone will contact Dave when the next subcommittee meeting is and then, uh,
Yeah, we'll schedule it at our next meeting.
We're gonna schedule subcommittee next meeting, not this one?
Yeah, the next meeting. Mike, uh,
On the 21st?
Yeah, Mike asked, uh, to, to do that.
Okay, so we're gonna schedule a subcommittee meeting on the 21st. And then we'll let you know when that is and you can come or whatever you want to do and we'll figure it out from there.
All right. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Okay.
Um, Rick, you want me to do this now?
Yeah, next section is public hearings. We do have an add-on.
Do you want me to do this?
Oh, yeah, the, uh,
The not,
Comments from the chairman, just to advise the public.
Okay, just, uh, to be clear about tonight, uh, we are not gonna be discussing, um, 1271 Monroe Turnpike. That's, uh, file number 1019D. We will not be discussing that tonight, as well as we are not discussing 376 Moose Hill Road, two lot subdivision, uh, file number 1268C.
Uh, Those are moving to our next meeting?
Those are moving to our next meeting.
Next meeting? 21st.
21st, the next meeting. And then we're gonna add for tonight, since we're in the public hearing section, we're gonna do this one first. We're gonna add SCP 2021-10, file number 1635A, Husatonic Valley Rail Trail Sections 2 and 3, uh, project number LO884-0001.
I'll make a motion to add that to the agenda?
Hey, it was continued from 9-2. And, uh, can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion, add that to the agenda?
Well done.
Yep.
Can I have a second?
Second?
There you go.
All right.
Like three seconds, but we got it.
You gotta call the vote?
Call it.
We have to vote to put it on the agenda. If we don't, if majority rules, it doesn't happen tonight.
So, Dom, can we vote to have this on the agenda tonight? Dom, you're first.
Uh, Smirgolino, yes.
Ryan?
Condon, yes.
Ambrosi, yes.
Maeni, yes.
Westlin, yes.
Oh, there you go, we're on. Okay, so who's here? Scott Schatzlein, are you here?
Yes, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
The floor is yours.
Does everybody hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Sorry, my camera doesn't seem to be going on. Hold on.
It's all right. We can hear you.
Okay, there you go. All right, so for the record, my name is Scott Schatzlein. I'm the town engineer. I'm a licensed, uh, professional engineer in the state of Connecticut. And with me this evening is Antonio DiCamillo, who's also a licensed engineer, and Jeff Volcheski, uh, who's a, uh, landscape architect. They both work for Stan Tech Consulting, uh, who are the project designers on this project. Hopefully, everybody recalls that, uh, we did our presentation at the September 2nd meeting. And, uh, we went over the, uh, parameters of the project, uh, through a PowerPoint presentation. Uh, the hearing was left open because it needed to, uh, get through inland wetlands. Uh, we have done that. We've been to wetlands. We received approval. Uh, Donna can read that into the record when I'm done. Uh, I believe that the, uh, approval was, uh, contingent on a referral to your commission, uh, indicating that the commission wanted your commission to consider a, uh, embellished or revised landscaping plan. Uh, and they also wanted the, uh, Conservation Commission and inland wetlands representative to review the, uh, landscape plan and provide some comment. That plan was submitted to them and they deferred it to the, uh, Parks Department, Master Gardener, who took a look at the plan and provided some comments. Uh, those comments were given to Stan Tech and they were incorporated into the plan set. We are prepared tonight to go over that. If, if you prefer, we can go through a very quick PowerPoint and show you what we've done with the landscaping. Uh, but it's your call. If you want to just proceed, um, we, we can do that as well.
I'll quick your PowerPoint.
Um, I think it would be about 10 minutes, maybe?
Let's do it.
Okay, so Donna, if you could, um, give the, uh, screen sharing permission to, um, Antonio, I guess you have, uh, control over the, uh, plan?
Um, I think it would be easier if we gave it to Jeff, because he's the one that's gonna be talking, so, um,
Okay.
And it's not a PowerPoint, it's just the updated plans, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll zoom in and, uh, try to be as quick and descriptive as possible.
Thank you.
Okay, can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Okay, so, um, uh, this is the set of construction drawings. Sorry for nothing, uh, nothing more, uh, colorful and elaborate. Um, but, uh, the, a couple of concerns, uh, there were, uh, was regarding, uh, specific vegetation. Um, obviously natives, uh, were the primary use, uh, and, uh, some additional offering, uh, associated with, uh, where the wetland gets, uh, relatively close to the trail. We want to prevent, uh, anyone from, uh, sort of stopping, uh, wandering off, uh, into a wetland area. But starting, um, starting at, at this end of the trail, the southernmost end, uh, prior to getting, uh, across the road through DPW, or through DPW across the, uh, uh, road, uh, into the park, uh, there was a, here who, uh, requested some screening, uh, and we provided, uh, a pretty, uh, uh, native screening right here. Um, moving, uh, north.
If I could just jump in for a second?
Um,
Sure. We're starting, just so everybody knows where we are. Um, this is south of Maple, uh, Drive, um, in from Victoria Drive, on the southerly end of where we're starting the project. Uh, just, just south of the pedestrian, existing pedestrian bridge that's over the West Quantic River. Sorry about that, go ahead.
Oh, no, that's okay. That's great. Thank you for the, uh, explanation and orientation for everyone. Um, uh, moving here, uh, there is an existing cross, or, uh, there's a crossing, uh, proposed. Uh, this area, we're planting with a native, um, uh, a native seed mix, uh, all the way through here. Uh, the reason why we chose not to use vegetation, uh, or potted, uh, containers was because of the, the, the fact that the areas are set down low, uh, they're very linear in nature and, uh, setting you, you plants in the, in this type of environment, uh, would not, uh, really provide benefit. And it was a, a bit of a cost savings to go ahead with a native seed mix. Uh, and based on the schedule, uh, the establishment of this should be, uh, relatively quick and, uh, successful. So we, we thought that was the best, uh, the best way to stabilize these areas. Uh, it introduced that, uh, sort of, uh, seed mix naturalized, uh, perspective. Uh, further north, this is where we get to Purdy Hill Road. So the, these are the types of areas that we're referring to where the, it, it gets very close to the trail. So what we wanted to do was add some native plants, a little bit of interest, uh, as well as protect the wetland from, uh, folks wandering, uh, through any vegetation making their way in. So we've selected, uh, some winter berry. Uh, if people don't know, it's, uh, it's like a holly, uh, green leaves, uh, tremendous amount of red berries on the fall, great for birds, great for habitat. And, um, some, uh, Viscom, uh, rhododendrons with, uh, these get, uh, these get fairly large, so we kept them a little further away, uh, from the, the trail. But it adds a, a bit of a difference, uh, both seasonally, uh, and the buffer as well because of their size. Uh, moving further again, uh, same kind of situation here. We continue to use the swamp azalea in this area where there is a, uh, there is a, a head wall right here that is proposed. So what we wanted to do was protect it. So not only will people, uh, pretty much stay out of this area, but also as the vegetation grows, it will hide the head wall. Uh, and the only thing you'll be able to see on the other side is, is the wetland. Um, sorry about that. Again, another, uh, situation here where we have, uh, a, a small point of wetlands right here. Uh, we added, uh, some additional, uh, vegetation here. So, and these are actually, uh, low bush blueberries. So again, we're, we're trying to add in, uh, habitat, wildlife. And if you get lucky enough to beat out the birds, you might get yourself a berry as you're, uh, as you're walking and enjoying the trail, uh, as they mature. Uh, so crossing Purdy Hill, uh, this was a sort of a critical area where, uh, we're introducing some new, uh, you know, hard elements, working with the distinct walls that are here. Uh, but we're also adding in some, uh, some proposed, uh, native, uh, low native perennials, uh, as well as some, uh, other, uh, larger woody perennials and then some, uh, eastern red cedars. And the, the idea here was to assure that, uh, the sightlines, uh, up and down, uh, which you can kind of see here in this hatching. Uh, so the sightlines were, uh, very clear. Um, as many probably know, this is a fairly busy road and we want to make sure that we add something in here that had a little punch, but also something that made sure that it was still safe, uh, visually from as far back as here, so that folks could see, uh, everything that's coming up and down the road. Uh, moving further north, onto the next sheet. Onto here, uh, we have a couple more, um, situations where the wetland does get a little bit close. So again, here we, uh, combine and the, the winter berry with red berries and, and some blueberries to again protect that, uh, that area, uh, for folks wandering. We want to make sure that we, uh, we, we don't encourage them to even walk anywhere near it. And then you'll see this hatch beginning, uh, right here. And then continuing on all the way up, uh, to here. All the way up through here where the wetland is, is right up against it. And again, similar to that, uh, uh, on the first sheet, uh, this is a very long linear, uh, section of, um, you know, uh, disturbance that's going to be right up against the wetland. And, uh, to introduce, uh, you know, potted containers here would be a tremendous expense, uh, a, as well as, uh, you know, an establishment challenge potentially. Uh, so we felt that, uh, using a wetland and a wetland fringe mix here, that's, uh, designed to be partially inundated throughout the year, but, uh, is all native and really good habitat, uh, we felt, uh, that that would be the best option for right here to both save money, but to establish a, uh, good wetland buffer that can range anywhere from 12 to 24 inches high, uh, and to deter people from, again, walking or, uh, leaving the trail, uh, making their way out. And the last, uh, section is, uh, where we're doing grading to make our, uh, way down and to, to traverse the slope that comes down from, uh, the park road. Uh, there's, uh, some native, uh, dogwoods and Amalankier or service berry. Uh, again, uh, shade tolerant native plants, uh, often found, um, you know, uh, in wooded areas, uh, wet areas as well. Uh, this is not as wet, but, uh, also a, a good plant for those areas. And we updated, uh, these crossings to make them a little more, uh, significant, a little more dynamic. When you, when you drive in, you'll visually be able to see that there's something significant right here and not just, uh, zoom by. And these plants match what we have at Purdy Hill Road. Uh, again, making sure, uh, this is obviously a much slower road, uh, but making sure that the, uh, the visual sightlines up and down are, are, are clear for, uh, for pedestrians, bikers and other users of the trail. And, uh, hopefully that was, uh, quick but descriptive enough.
And I just wanted to add that, um, the, the majority of the trail, we're gonna be using, uh, conservation seed mix. And the idea is to, uh, keep the, the cross-sectional footprint of the trail as minimal as possible. So we're looking to have some minor shoulder areas. And those need to be left open for travel and, uh, people to pull off and, and rest and talk and whatever they're doing. So we did not want to, uh, fill those areas with, um, any types of, uh, trees or shrubs, uh, because they're, they need to be open, clear, shoulder areas. So with that, that concludes our, uh, presentation. Uh, I don't know if anybody has any questions?
We're about to find out. No comments? Dom, too?
Uh, just one question. Are all the plantings all natives?
Yes, they are. All plantings are natives. We've actually even, uh, gone as far as, uh, removing most of the, uh, subspecies, so to make them, uh, just, uh, genus and species, not subspecies of, uh, natives. So yes. Yep.
Thank you.
No questions?
No questions.
No questions.
One question. Sorry.
Uh-huh.
Um, Scott, were you guys able to add in any kind of signage on that road going in where the current trail is gonna cross over? I know there's signage on Purdy Hill.
Yeah, there's signage at, uh, Purdy Hill. And at the last meeting, you talked about, uh, potential, um, signage that we're gonna add in at the, um, the main driveway entrance to the park. So yes. Oh, and I also, I also may add to that, um, I believe that one of the, um, exhibits is a, uh, some comments by Anna Butter, uh, asking for a fence, oh, excuse me, a, uh, uh, gate put in the fence that's, uh, across their property. Uh, that first property that we talked about with the landscaping, we're gonna be putting a fence and the landscaping in to, uh, prevent people from cutting through. Right now, they cut through the private property over to Victoria Drive. And so we want to put a berm with some landscaping and some fencing, uh, to force them to stay on the trail and not cut through the property. The property owner asked us to put a gate in that fence and we're more than happy to do that.
Thank you. No other questions?
I don't have any questions either. Rick?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I just, uh, wanted to acknowledge. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I just, uh, wanted to acknowledge the inland wetlands letter of decision dated September 22nd, 2021 is exhibit number six.
Uh, I guess we'll ask the public. Is there anybody in the public that'd like to speak in favor? Anybody in public like to speak against? I don't hear either. Scott, what do you want to do? You want to close it?
Well, yes, I'd like to say in closing that we've met all the requirements of the inland wetlands commission and we've addressed all the, the requirements, uh, of the planning and zoning commission. Uh, we think it's a great project. We're looking forward to, uh, getting this thing out to bid and built. Uh, the construction will take place, uh, next year, uh, next construction season, hopefully done by the, uh, fall.
Wonderful. All right, it's closed?
Thank you.
That was nice. That was a good one. That was cool. All right, next. So we're going to go to public hearing number five. Actually, this would be number six, because Scott's was five. Uh, EFP 2021 dash O2 file number 106, 10 and 36 Main Street. Who's here?
Good.
Uh.
President of the Commission.
Mr. Soli.
For the record, my name's Kevin Soli. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of Connecticut with Soli Engineering. Office is located, uh, right here in the, uh, Main Street. Uh, with me here this evening is Chris Palowski from my office, and then also we have representatives of, from the applicant team on the line if there are any, uh, potential questions or comments. Um, we're here, uh, this evening to continue the public hearing for the proposed excavation filling permit at 10 and 36 Main Street. So I'm just going to orient everyone one more time real quickly. So this is an area of the town of Monroe. Um, our site's located along Route 25, which runs, uh, north and south along the western side of town. Um, these two properties are, uh, immediately north of the town line with the town of Trumbull. This is a, uh, a little bit closer up. You can see the town line here. 10 and 36 Main Street is a former Vichy Vitramont facility. And, uh, Victoria Drive runs, um, from Route 25 west and east. Um, recently approved in our construction parking facility for, uh, the last one. This facility is just to the east of the property and then this is our corporate headquarters as well. And 5 Victoria Drive, Ole Soccer, uh, lives is just to the east of the property as well. Um, so we, we were before you here once before and we talked about the proposed application. Um, we are proposing to, uh, fill the property and to import material to prepare the site for future site development. Um, uh, at the last hearing, we discussed, we were still in the process with inland wetlands commission. We wanted to provide a formal response to comments raised from the community and also comments during this, uh, last hearing. Um, uh, there were some questions and comments about, um, some of the material that had been stockpiled on the site. So we did provide documentation, um, on exactly how much material was stockpiled and where it came from. I'll review that with the commission now. Um, there were approximately 500 cubic yards of material brought to the property from a stockpile standpoint from 10 Victoria Drive, which is where the, um, uh, parking facility is located, just to the east of the site. There were approximately 400 cubic yards of material brought in from a piece of property in New Canaan that was owned by the applicant. Um, and then there was approximately 10,000 cubic yards that was, that was stockpiled on the site from the Pondview, Pondview Development at 127 Main Street. Which is just, uh, slightly to the north and on the other side of Route 25. So we did also, in addition to that, we also provided testing results, which was provided by, um, the, the material from 10 Victoria Drive and the property in New Canaan. The material that came from Pondview is native material, which is, um, which was a, a byproduct of the work activities going on there. So that's all native, native material that's being processed. Some of the, um, overburden and, uh, tailings came over from that site and have been stockpiled on the property. So we did provide test results, analytical results, which is in the packet in front of you. And if you go to the summary pages, they said that all of that material was, uh, all non-detect. So it was all clean and there were no issues with that material being stockpiled. Additionally, we made some other very minor changes to the plans in response to Scott's comments and, um, discussions with the wetlands commission. We added some additional, uh, sedentation traps around the site, um, which provide additional, uh, catchment for that stormwater or the, the, during construction, prior to being discharged into a water quality basin. We also reduced our overall limit of disturbance to minimize, uh, the impact in the area that hasn't already been disturbed. And we also added, um, uh, four, uh, swamp oak trees to be installed in the area closest to the outlet of the detention base. Um, those are all native, um, material, native, native plant, native plants, excuse me, for connection. Um, you know, I think we, we've been able to discuss all of, uh, Scott Schott's lines comments with him and we believe we've addressed them adequately and we can, um, satisfy anything else that, that's outstanding as part of a commission of approval. Um, and, uh, those are the big, uh, components that we wanted to discuss after the last hearing. I'll say we have closed our wetlands hearing. They did instruct the, uh, staff to, uh, draft up a letter of approval for our proposed application. They haven't voted on it yet, but we expect that vote to take place at their next meeting. Um, their next meeting is obviously before your next meeting. Um, so if there, if we can address all the comments and questions raised by the commission, um, but what we would love is if, if, if the commission views this application favorably, perhaps you could instruct staff. The, the meeting has to stay open because you need to get that wetlands approval. But if, if you feel comfortable with what we propose, if you could direct staff to maybe bring an approval letter to that hearing, you might be able to close and vote and act on that all in one. Uh, just to help, uh, in those, to go through the process. Um, so with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions the commission may have.
Dom? Um, no questions.
The retention basin would be enough to, for the water that's being worked in the cleaning area and moved and all that?
Yes, yes, it is. And it's been sized.
Really my question was one of my, one of the people out there that asked me to ask you this question.
Yes, the, so the, the water quality basin and the sedimentation basins have all been sized to accommodate all this runoff coming generated from the site during the period of construction. Um, once we, uh, you know, and what we're doing is we've designed this to kind of create our back edge so that when we come in in the future, um, we're not going to have to go beyond the limits we're establishing as part of this application. Um, once we come forward with a formal site plan application with buildings and paving and things like that, um, we may be, you know, we may be adding some additional above ground attention or putting in some below ground attention. But the site is designed from a fill permit standpoint, is designed to accommodate all the stormwater that will come off the ground.
Thank you.
Hi. Um, was, uh, wetlands given the, uh, soil testing results also?
Uh, they were not. They didn't ask for it.
Uh, no other questions?
How much material did you say you bought at that site?
Approximately 500 cubic yards from 10 Victoria Drive, approximately 400 cubic yards.
About 11,000 cubic yards.
Yep. From 230 West Road in the Cape Town. And then a little over 10,000 yards from 127.
That's all the material that's brought onto that property?
Yeah, since this owner has owned it.
Uh, you had the dump tickets and all that kind of stuff?
I mean, we provided testing analytics that shows that the materials.
Those that you tested. This here shows me that Victoria Drive, we tested 230 West. And those are the only two I have.
Right. We didn't provide any testing for the property on 127 Main Street because that's all native material and it's rock that's being blasted and processed and it's native.
Right. All I'm looking for is the dump tickets that were bought onto that property. Because this just tells me this is from Victoria and this is from West. It doesn't say it was bought there.
It doesn't say what?
That it was brought to that property. It says this was tested 10 Victoria. Where's the ticket service?
Well, we're, I mean, I'm, I'm testifying that and offering test.
Oh, you're te- I have that. I want to know. I think it's more material there. I think there's material there. Can we mute that, please? Thank you. So Rick, have you been out to that site?
Uh, yes.
Is there, is there more than 11,000 yards of material on that site?
That, that's my understanding, looking at it visually.
That there's more?
No, that, that's approximately 11,000.
11,000.
Excluding the existing stockpile that's been there for years.
Okay. Is there millings on that property?
No. That was removed.
It was when?
Uh, over a year ago. By the pre- by the previous owner.
No, at Wetlands, no, at Wetlands, there was, um, Lois, Lois saw pictures of that, the millings are.
Yeah, the, the, the millings that I saw over a year ago were removed. If there's something new, I'm not aware of it.
Okay. When were you there last?
About two weeks ago.
It's pretty amazing. I just want to see the dump tickets.
Okay. I mean, this is, you know, I think that the commission has, has received several applications for fill permits and approved several.
We have.
And they haven't required dump tickets from any project.
And we have.
Dump tickets from any, uh, local work activity.
People haven't brought fill onto the property that they didn't have a permit for.
Well, I, I don't think, I, I think our, the applicant has been more than forthcoming with this condition and provided both documentation verbally and in writing to staff and to the commission with their intentions and they, they established exactly.
I, I understand that. You, and you, and you bring up that all the time you're here that you say about this fill, this is a tremendous amount of fill that we're going to bring into this property. Most fill permits aren't tremendous amount of fill that you're going to bring into the property. Most of them are. You know, it, I don't think that we've ever had high volumes of this kind of fill come into properties nor, you know, or, or, or projects. Am I right or not? But I don't believe that we have. So we, we need to know what was brought onto the property before it came in front of us.
I, I, we provided you testing as to what's come in.
I asked you. And I asked you for the manifestation of dump tickets of what was brought onto the property. You're giving me, you're giving me, you know, testing reports, but I asked you specifically the manifest and the dump tickets last time you were here. And I specifically asked that for a reason. Because I wanted to know what was brought onto the property at the time that you didn't have a permit to bring it onto the property in the first place.
With all due respect, uh, Terrence Ambrosi, I think the, the, the applicant had a legal opinion and presented that opinion to the commission that there.
And that's, and that's fine. But at, at that point, I stated that at that meeting, when you brought that up in front of us, I said to you that we would want to get a ruling from the town's attorney before we proceeded on, but they believed that what they could do. And if they chose to do that on their own, then that was a violation of our fill permit. Because they didn't have one. So I asked specifically what I need to get. And I'm not holding this. You choose to go and do it. Now I want to see the documentation of what went onto that property.
But we, we've provided you documentation in writing on what's been brought to the property and analytical results.
I don't have the tickets. Certain people are going to dump on your property. Not to give you some kind of, some kind of dump ticket, no. We're just going to let somebody dump whatever they think they want.
We've, we've provided where the material came from and the results for it.
Okay. Well, as far as I'm concerned, I want those before I vote on it.
And, and I apologize if, if I misheard at the last hearing because I, I thought you were most focused on the, you know, how much material, quantity and testing results. I didn't hear a request for specific.
I have, I have nothing to, what, what you just told me what the quantity was.
It's, it was in our letter, our, our response to comments.
What did you receive today, Rick?
Are, you're talking about the new applications or?
No. Did you receive any other documentation? So you didn't turn anything at all? Basically, I want to know what was brought onto the property. Like I said to you, I want, yeah, but if I have the tickets and I know it was brought there and what trunk and company it was and where it came from and all that kind of stuff, I'm all good with that. But I don't have any of that.
Well, I, I'm sorry. You know, we, we provided your response on September 29th that had the, the volume of material, where it came from and testing results for that material. We didn't submit anything new this evening. Um, you know, we, you, the commission's had that well in advance of this meeting. We tried to be, you know, follow your schedule for material. Again, the, we didn't provide a specific dump tickets. You know, I, I didn't specifically hear you request those dump tickets. I think that's a lot of information. I think, you know, you're going to be looking for that for all applications moving forward. It should be something that may.
No, I'm, I'm not going to look for it for all applications because the reason is, is if you came in here for a fill permit, you would probably ask for those during, for, part of our application or, or approval. You understand what I'm saying? Know where the stuff is coming from that comes into this town. This came in here before, if it came here. That's the only reason why I'm asking for them. It's not because, I mean, I would put that as part of approval and as part of approval that I was going to do this. I'd want to see what some tickets are coming from. I want to see who the dump people are that, that's bringing them in because you're bringing a tremendous amount of material into this town. So I would want that as far as our approval. I'm just asking you to give me the documentation of what you just brought there without an approval.
Which, well, a- again, we, we communicate, the applicant and the owner communicated with the commission what their intentions were. They followed through with those specific intentions. And then, and then subsequent to that, we ceased all activities when the commission made a different, uh, determination.
I have that because we were, we're going to hand out a cease and desist order. I have all that. We were going to do that. I don't know if we handed one out or did.
Yes, it was a shit.
Yeah. So we handed out a cease and desist order. That's why it ceased. But I'm saying to you is that I, I just specifically want to know what was brought there. I mean, I don't think that's being unreasonable.
We told you.
I want, I want the dump tickets.
Kevin?
I don't know about Chris.
Excuse. Excuse me. It's Arnold Karp, the managing member of this piece of property. And the dump tickets, the material leaves my site in New Canaan or 25, uh, uh, the other site and goes there. No one else besides our immediate employees or subcontractors are allowed onto that property or to dump. Both entries have been, uh, closed up with either boulders or the fence gate. But, but I do not send a ticket from the truck that I have hired from New Canaan or from Monroe, going to Monroe. So I cannot provide you a ticket. Uh, I can attest that every truck that is sent is going no place else as, uh, we're in control of the loading and the unloading. But we have had every piece of material, not every piece, but samples, uh, all brought and sent to the town and there is nothing there that I wouldn't put under my own house. We own the property and we're not about to go pollute it. So the discussion about you, where it's all coming from, it is very logical. It is coming from clean sites and it is either tested before it moves or when it gets to the site.
So 10 Victoria Drive is whose site?
That's the, the parking facility that's under construction.
So that's not his site?
No, that's, no, it's not. It's the parking facility under construction. And we provided analytical results from the material that came from that property.
And who bought the material to there?
They did. That contractor?
That contractor. So then there is contractors that bring material.
That, that, that 400 and some odd yards that came from there? Yeah, I believe that there would be.
And I would say, Kevin, there was a visual inspection before it left down the street and it was inspected when it was brought onto our site. And we had analyticals before we moved it and we watched it get moved.
Rob?
Concerning the older stockpilings.
Yes.
I've read the, the, the soil testing results and I'm, I'm comfortable with these results. Were the older stockpilings tested?
So the older stockpiles that were there, um, the, the, uh, the stockpiles that were there were done as part of a, when the, there's a previous owner. There's a fill permit granted for 36 Main Street. Material was brought from 5 Victoria Drive, which is Ole Soccer. And then there was some other material stockpiled on the site. Um, subsequent to that owner, it went back to Vichy Vitramont. And then Vichy Vitramont was entertaining a number of potential buyers for the property. During those due diligence investigations, material, all the material on site was tested. And as, as Rick indicated before, there was some material, I think some asphalt that was identified on the site. That was the only material identified that had any potential, uh, became any problematic. became any problematic, and that material was removed from the property, so that.
It was tested then?
It was tested, yes. And it was all tested prior to the current owner and the applicant acquiring the property.
And you have the information, Rick, on that?
I, 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 I believe, uh, I, I have that in the office.
Okay. Um, what is the plan for any type of processing equipment on this site?
So we did request a waiver to allow for us to, you know, if, if, if any material that comes to the property needs to be properly sized and placed, to be placed and compacted, we would want the ability to do that. We do have the proper separation from any residential zones. So it is something that's been, you know, previously approved by this commission, and we request the same consideration.
Okay. Um, that's all I have.
My questions are answered. No further questions.
Thank you.
What happened to, uh, Vitramon? Was that, that one that was taken down, is that still there?
Uh.
That hole away?
Well, any of the, any of the, uh, demolition debris that needs to be, or would need to have been removed from the site was. There's probably some concrete that was, um, you know, the concrete foundations, it was processed. The materials removed and then placed back in the, in the hole of the foundation. Which is consistent with a lot of demolition.
Yeah.
Kevin, it's, uh, Kevin and Commissioners, it's Arnold Karp again. Sorry that I couldn't be there. I'm actually on the road traveling. Uh, but when we purchased ten thirty-six, uh, the Vitramon site, uh, the prior owner met all of the requirements, not only that we required, but deep in everybody else in the state of Connecticut, uh, as far as what was there, and they had spent, uh, hundreds of thousands of dollars prior to our even looking at it to make sure that everything that was on the site was clean. I believe even prior to about six months of our purchase, uh, there was somebody who had illegally dumped something and they had taken that off. So, uh, during, you know, uh, the transfer and since our ownership, uh, we can attest to everything that's, uh, been brought on site, uh, being clean.
Now, thanks. Now, um, uh, bring it, bring in equipment onto the site. You want like a rock crusher and stuff like that on site?
Yeah, so, in, in, in.
Here's my fear.
Okay.
My fear is it turns into, we're going to bring materials there, crush it, put it on a truck, ship it out somewhere else. For sale or for whatever. I know that's not the intent, but that's my fear.
Well, I think, I think that can certainly be addressed as a condition of approval, but that's.
And that would be my fear on any property in town, not just this one. Um, not that it's the end of the world, but there, you know, that kind of equipment's not allowed, so by us giving you a waiver, that would be my fear, that it all of a sudden turns into, we're going to dump a bunch of rocks, we're going to turn it into this or that and this and that, and then all of a sudden.
It's a pretty visible site.
Visible or not, it, I just think the fact that, um, we probably don't jump on that stuff as fast as we could anyway, so if they do it, it takes time to get somebody there to stop it, and not somebody, and somebody's not watching it at all times too. That's the other problem.
I mean, I mean, I'd say that, that, you know, Mr. Karp, the applicant, has a considerable amount of money invested in this property, and his goal is to clean it up as fast as possible to get it developable. There, there's no, you know, there, there's no benefit for anybody to set up a, a, that type of activity here.
Sometimes we, we disagree with that. We, we think there is a benefit. The processing itself is the benefit.
No, I understand, but I think this, this isn't, this isn't a site that's out of sight, out of mind, right? I mean, there's twenty-five thousand cars that drive by the site all day, and if that type of activity was something that was going to be conducted here, it's, there, there's, the likelihood of that getting by for a day is unlikely. And I think, and I think that, you know.
Yes and no. Yes, sometimes, but sometimes the best hiding of something is in front of your face.
But, but Kevin, we can, we, look, uh, I'm happy to allow a condition that, you know, uh, the, the intent is to fill this site, not to process and sell it elsewhere. We're trying to get the other site on, uh, Pondview cleaned up. Why, you know, uh, why would we take material, again, if something came in that wasn't suitable, yes, we would send that back, but that's why we're there to check. But if they, if the commission wants to make that a condition that the, you know, I'm going to say a majority, ninety-nine percent, or something that, uh, we thought we had a problem with, would not leave the site. I, I see no problem with that. The intent is to fill this, not to make, turn it into a processing, and the only reason we need to uh, do any of that is in case any of the material that comes in is too big to place, since we need to do it with structural fill.
Yeah, all, all of the material is going to be placed and compacted in, um, you know, twelve inch lifts with a nominal aggregate size. It's going to be oversaw by a geotechnical engineer, because any potential retailer would want to come here in the future, would need all those compaction tests to be able to ensure that the material was placed correctly. So, you know, they need the ability to make sure they can create that material that meets those specifications. And only all for two, the commission approved a fill permit for the site immediately south of this, and did not have any conditions to provide dump tickets or to, it also allowed, it also allowed, also created the waivers for the processing.
Hold up for me. On that, we didn't allow, we didn't, and, and I, I don't like when you say that we didn't, that we knew where that material was coming from. We knew that material was coming from across the street. That's why we didn't put all these parameters in there for them, because we knew exactly how much they were taking off the other site and how much they were bringing over to the other site. That's the only reason why. It wasn't like that we're holding you at a different standard. We're not holding you at a different standard. You're bringing in what you consider, you know, clean fill. You want to process it and break it down on the site. That, that's wasn't happening with the other site. That wasn't the intent of that. It was to take the material off there to level that site and to bring it over to fill it to the other site. You know, they weren't bringing in anything or bringing clean fill from anywhere else or anything like that, so I, I, I don't want, you bring it up to us all the time like that, and you say, well, you didn't, we didn't do this for them. But that's not true. It's not the way it was.
There was, and, and I, I apologize if I'm speaking out of turn. I'm, I'm just trying to bring the, the concept of fundamental fairness back to the application.
And, and, and believe me, and, and I want to do it that way. But you want to bring a crusher in there. You want to bring in clean, you want to bring in what clean fill is, but it's not really, because if there's metal in it, you got to take it out of it, and you got to separate it from that, because it's, you're bringing in demolition material.
We're.
You basically are bringing in demo material. Are you not?
We haven't, no, not the intent. We don't intend to bring demolition material to this site. We intend to bring, you know, the material from Pondview.
That's, I got all that. And I, that was your, I understand that, but I asked you specifically at the other meeting, is that where it was coming from? And you said, no, maybe not all of it. That's exactly what you said to me.
And, and I, and that's a.
And, and it's probably, and you're probably right, because it probably is not all going to come from, because I don't know how much material you have over there at Pondview that's going to, I mean, you're asking, how much you asking to fill here?
We're told one of these are a hundred and, uh, fifty-eight thousand cubic yards.
And how much material you think you're going to get from Pond?
I would say probably ninety percent of it. Eighty to ninety percent.
And that's why I like to see dump tickets. Make sure it's coming from there. Because Rockhead's no longer doing Pond.
Yes, they are.
Yes, we are still, Kevin, and Commission. We are still the underlying permit owner and the owner of all the material that comes off of Pondview.
Yes.
And so somebody else is processing it?
They have a, yes, they have a subcontractor agreement to someone, for someone to come in and process, correct. But Rockhead is still responsible for all that material at Pondview.
So all that material that leaves the site, you're going to have documentation. Where it went to, right?
Well, right, but if, but if.
I'm just saying to you, is, is, it's okay. Understand what I'm saying? I have a problem with bringing in clean fill that, that you want to process. I mean, what do you need a crusher for? Because basically.
In case, in case some material, if, if someone, there are applications approved by this commission all the time, and some of those applications include excavation and some of them include filling. And if there is an approval granted that requires excavation and removal of material, because that site plan isn't balanced, and they need a place to place that material, then they want to bring it over here. And if that material has rocks and boulders that exceed six inches in diameter or three inches in diameter, that material has to be processed, so it can be placed in compacted lifts.
No, I have all that, but if, if somebody's taking out rock, like, like they're doing over at Pondview.
Yeah.
They're crushing it over there and they're selling it.
Correct.
Right.
Correct.
Your boulder kind of thing doesn't really work for me, because people are just going to, unless you get somebody from some structured site.
Kevin's saying if it comes from a different property other than Pond.
I, no, I have, because Pondview, they're crushing and selling.
Right. So then he's saying he doesn't control what comes off of, and I have all that. This other place, and if they get something there.
They want to crush it. To process, but you want, so they, so you're going to.
Correct. The goal, the goal.
But they're not going to sell what they, what they take in. If they process it, they're not going to sell it.
Crushers are incredibly expensive to own and to rent. The intent here isn't to have to have a crusher on site all the time, because that's incredibly expensive.
No, I have.
To bring in material that meets the specification, so it can just be placed in.
I have all that. I have all that. Listen.
Yeah, but you're not going to, you're not going to pull a crusher on and off site.
No, but I think, no, I don't, but I think if, if there's, if there's a project, let's say, let's say a building's getting constructed, and they know that that building is going to require the export of three thousand yards or whatever the material is, right? They could import that material and put it aside, and then bring in a crusher, go through it all, and then the crusher leaves a week later.
Yeah, but why, why you're crushing that material is to take out, if there's rebar in there or the weather's in there, whatever is in there, it's recycling. But it's basically, is what, but I'm not saying to you is, I got all that, and I, I understand what you're saying. I just need to put in the protection for this town. That's all I want to do.
That's, and that's fine. I think putting protections in for the town are a great idea, and I think, listen, there's, there's a lot of concern about allegations and assertions being thrown around about this application and others, right? And people keep bringing it back to Fairfield. We don't want another Fairfield. There's a very big distinction between these types of projects and what happened in Fairfield. Because what happened in Fairfield, the people who were acting illegally, it wasn't their property. They had no liability, because it was something that was owned by the town, and the people who were doing it, who were all being prosecuted for the crimes that they committed, had no underlying liability to the property. It makes zero sense for a property owner to knowingly or willingly import material that's hazardous. It's counterintuitive, because they'd be responsible for the cleanup. And, and the, the, you know, the continued, the continued assertion that we got to protect the town from another Fairfield, you're, you're assuming that the property owner wants to just import contaminated material to their own property and then does it.
Saying that.
Pass the sniff test.
No, I'm not saying that. We already have issues in this town. All right.
But, but gentlemen, Commissioner Ambrosi, it's Arnold Karp again. I have over three million dollars committed to this piece of property and six million dollars to other property in town. I have a long, long record of developing and building successfully. I am not going to go put thirty-five years of my, uh, background and abilities at risk to take in anything on property that I'm going to own, hopefully for either multi-generational or for a long period of time. So we continue to go around, uh, the thing. Fairfield was a town project led by a bunch of dishonest people who they employ. This is a project that is owned by me, overseen by my staff, overseen by high-quality people that I am ultimately responsible for through the LLCs that own it. I am not going to destroy my value, my name or reputation by taking in anything that we think is questionable. As Kevin has said, ninety percent of this material is going to come in from Pondview, because I need to get it off that site to get that site finished. The other ten percent, and I, it could be as much as twelve or fifteen percent, are going to come from sites that I own, some that have rock. But my structural engineer has told me nothing can be larger. Is it six inches or twelve inches? And that's why we would need equipment on occasion to take what's there and make it suitable for buildings to go on top. So, uh, again, we continue to go around in, in circles on this. Uh, I am in charge of this site. I am the managing member of the LLCs that own these sites. I am in Monroe at least once or twice a week. I have people who work for me who check these sites. So I, I understand the town's concern, but I am here to make these sites better, not to lose millions of dollars in, uh, development and long-term planning.
And, and, and on top of that, and I understand Arnold's support, but just remember, it's, it's approval goes with the site.
Of course.
If the site is sold, it's no longer Arnold that owns. So that's another concern that this commission has to take in to consideration. It's like he acquired a piece of property, Arnold did on his own, and is a disaster. I don't want to get into that right now, but it is. You hear me? So it's like everything else. The approval goes with the property. I just want to make sure that everybody knows what we approve goes with the property. It doesn't go with the property owner. It goes with the property. If Arnold's there forever to take care of it, that's fine, but Arnold could turn, they, they could turn around tomorrow and sell it, and then we have to worry about somebody else following what we put into place to make sure. That's the crusher. That's what's coming in. If, if it sells it and then they don't have the material coming from Pondview, then it's going to come from somewhere else. So that all has to be taken into consideration. I'm not trying to be over here and be unreasonable or anything like that. It's not being unreasonable. It's to take care of what we need to take for, for the people in town in Monroe.
And, and, and I don't think, I don't think I said unreasonable or anything like that, and I, I'm not trying to insinuate that. I just want fairness.
No, and, and, and I don't mind giving you fairness, but I, I also, we need to, like, like I said to you, the other piece you bring up, it was, that was cut and dry. It was coming from one across the street, right over to the other side. You hear me? And those both pieces were owned by one property owner. Both of them, or a couple of property owners, whatever, whether it was a couple of partners. But that's where that was coming from. And you, you bring it up like we didn't require any of that, because we knew where it was coming from. And it is like I said to you, and as a homeowner, any approval goes with the property. Doesn't go with the property owner in, in, in the same thing. It's, it's like anything else. We have tremendous amount of people that all of a sudden they abandoned the property and they get out, and then somebody else is in there. And then they're, got this approval, and then we have to keep an eye on it. That's where I stand at that. I'm good. You're good again?
Yeah.
Good. Anybody else?
Yeah, I would just want to.
Here we go.
I want to speak to Mr. Karp. Um, I, I encourage you not to take offense to, to the depth of questioning provided by this commission, because it, you know, it could come off as kind of trying to give you a hard time, but you just have to realize that our votes and the approvals are predicated on our due diligence here. And perhaps other sites, we have seen other sites, like Commissioner Ambrosi said, where they've been destroyed, and the ownership changes and the, 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 the original owner is out of, out of, out of Dodge. So we're trying to, uh, actually mitigate that possibility at this point. And it's not, you know, we're not trying to give you a hard time. We want to see you get this done and get it developed and, and, and turn it into something useful. Um, but we just got to do our due diligence along the way.
Right, and, and, and I certainly understand that, and I am, you know, again, I've committed real dollars to this. I am also prepared to say that if there is a change of ownership, you know, if somebody comes in tomorrow and, uh, decides that they want to own this site, uh, I will come back to the commission and speak to you guys about that, but my intent is to fill this, to then get tenants, uh, and then develop it. It is not to, uh, take a lot of time, money, and effort and create a problem for this commission, for the town, or for myself, or anybody who works for me. So, uh, I'm just looking for a level playing field, but the last time material came off of my site in New Canaan was brought up. It was tested prior. I know who's trucking it. We're only using people who, you know, I, I know and I trust. Uh, the last thing I want is any sort of headaches on this. But remember, I also have, uh, an engineer, uh, a group of attorneys, and everybody else looking over our shoulders. So as long as, uh, the same, uh, documentation or concerns are for everybody, I'm fine with that. But, you know, I, I, I have attended these meetings. Uh, I am a phone call away. If Rick know, needs me, he knows that he can call, um, so it's not. So it's not an absentee owner, if anything, it is too much of a hands-on owner and that's why I can speak to almost every rock. But again, the material is really, in our case, is also coming from across the street because I need to get material off of Pondview and that's what makes this site, I will say, easier to fill.
Thank you. You good?
I'm good.
I just had a question. What do you think the timeline will be for completing the fill? Best guess?
12, 18 months.
Thank you. I lost all train of thought on my questioning.
Which is unfortunate because I love your thought.
Don't lie. Cut off, cut off. Easy. I'm just, the, the whole crusher thing just, not, not that it scares me, just makes me, I, I know the whole idea of spilling it, obviously, right? You're, you, you want to fill, build, rent, whatever, whatever you're doing. So I get it. You're gonna continuously, so I guess material coming from New Canaan Greenwich, Hartford, wherever it's coming from, that's all gonna be tested before it's dropped on site or does it get tested once it's dropped on site? How's that?
It would be before.
So it would be before and then, and then we would have access to the manifest for that.
Sure. Motion wants to see it?
Yes.
I, I will say that one of the things we also proposed is anything like this, you know, we did provide a template for monthly monitoring reports submitted by our office.
That's great. That was my next question. So you're gonna have monitoring reports, which are fine. Perfect. Perfect, perfect, perfect. Anybody else? We can't close this anyway because you're waiting for.
Wetlands approval.
Waiting for Wetlands approval and that's that. Anything else, Rick?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, just want to acknowledge Exhibit 5, which is the town engineer's report dated October 5th, and we also need to open up the public here, a public motion.
Right now?
Yeah. And then, then we can continue.
I was just waiting for you. You good?
Good.
Let's go to the public. Anybody in the public have any questions about this application?
I do.
For or against? We'll do it all at once. Who is I do?
Ah, this is Pete Metropolis, 36 Timothy Road and a bunch of others. I'm trying to get my camera on for you as I am not shy, but I can't figure it out. So I've got a question. Well, my first comment is I, I sure hope this commission sure doesn't fall for the banana and the.
Can we mute Mr. Karp?
Arnold, can you please mute your phone?
Mute his car?
He says he's driving.
The whole car. The whole car. Mute the whole car.
We're good.
Thank you. I see, you can, you got the floor again.
Look out at this, but as I tried to chime in last, or a month ago, three weeks ago, whatever the last meeting was, and I had some difficulties in my end, I guess. I, I was in Monroe several times last couple of months, actually. I, I've actually witnessed multiple truckloads being filled, hauled off-site from properties that Mr. Karp owns in Monroe to his more valuable properties. And then he brings material in. And one thing that I noticed is that 64 Cambridge has a lot of valuable materials that should be used to fill his crater, but he's been taking it to 3610 Main Street. Kevin Sully is either willfully ignorant or a liar and Mr. Karp, that's my opinion, and Mr. Karp has flat outlined to you guys, so I just hope you guys dig a little deeper.
All right, personal attacks are not allowed during public hearing, so you're gonna have to refrain from that.
I'm a pride wolf, so I'm a little defensive, but thank you, appreciate.
Awesome. Anybody else? For or against? Okay. So. Huh? It's open, but we could, we can instruct staff to draft a letter of approval so it can be ready for us to then deliberate and vote either for or against. We don't know what Wetland is doing. Right, so we can't.
Well, we're not, you can be conditional on that.
We're not, we're not closing technically.
Yeah. But at least we can prep them up.
So. Did Wetlands give you an approval yet?
No, not yet.
They instructed staff to draft up a, a letter of approval. During the hearing, they deliberated, they said draft up a letter of approval, it'll be voted on at the next meeting.
And that'll be written to the record at the next meeting.
Okay. Listen, Rick can write up a, for or against? Well, he could write up a, a letter of approval and then it goes to vote anyway, so if everybody decides to vote, they decide to vote, but at least the approval letter will be done. So is every, is everybody? Here we go. Well, here we go. We have to put in certain. I haven't even asked a question yet. All I'm saying is, does the, is the commission okay with Rick drafting an approval letter? And then, once we get the Wetlands approval or denial, whatever, actually, if they deny it, then it's not happening, but if we get their approval, then it just saves Mr. Sully and Karp two weeks of waiting for us to go over it. Is the commission okay with that? And we could add conditions of approval after the letters are written, once we discuss it. It just tees it up. It's not a yes or a no. I mean, we can still discuss and vote down or, or for depending. Is the commission okay with that?
Yes.
I am.
I'm all right with it.
I'm not seated.
You don't have to be seated. You can, you can talk now. You can talk. Yeah, we're not deliberating. Rick, it sounds like, and this is my opinion from, from everyone, if you can just draft up.
Yeah, I'll draft a resolution.
Awesome. Anything else, Mr. Sully? You all set?
Uh, yeah.
Awesome.
So.
Sweet. Thank you. And that's gonna stay open till our next meeting.
Thank you.
Let's go to, what am I, what am I doing here? How about?
Minutes, number eight.
Number seven.
Which is number eight.
Or number eight, sorry.
And minutes need to be tabled, Mr. Chairman.
You don't have them?
No.
These aren't done, not done right here?
Not here. I just saw them.
Do we get the minutes?
Yeah, they're here.
I have them right here. This is September 16th.
September 16th, right?
I stand corrected.
Yes, the minutes were there.
Okay, good.
All right, so let's go with the minutes. Anybody have any questions, concerns? Hey, Mr. Sully's name's all over these minutes.
Sorry.
What else is there? It should be the Sully minutes. Anybody have any changes? Anything, anything with the minutes? Discuss the minutes? Motion to approve the minutes? Anybody?
Making to approve?
Who's making the motion to approve?
Smurgalino.
Smurgalino. He can do that, he's seated. We have a motion? Second? Second. We have a second. Any discussion on the minutes? Right now? You good?
I'm, I'm good.
Tom, start it off.
Smurgalino, yes.
Condon, yes.
Ambrosi, yes. Mainey, yes.
Westland, yes.
Minutes approved. Number nine, pending application deliberations or terminations.
I have the Houston Valley Trail, if you're so inclined, I'll read the resolution, Chairman.
Talk to me.
Special exception permit, Houston Valley Trail, actions two and three, SCP 2021-10, file 16358, Hurdy Hill Road in Wolf Park vicinity. Applicant property owner of town in Monroe. Owners are Town of Monroe, State of Connecticut, R E M Enterprises LLC. Whereas the P and Z Commission is considering an SCP approval for the following special exception permit for Houston Valley Trail exten, extension. Whereas the proposed use requires commission approval for an SCP. Whereas the subject property consists of approximately 227 acres. Whereas the course of review of the application, of the application, the commission has noted the following, site is not located within the public supply watershed area, site is not located within 500 feet of the town boundary, property is located within a map flood plain, application does have inland wetland commission regulated activities associated with this project and receives a permit and notice tonight, site is not subject to a conservation easement or other restrictive conditions. Whereas the commission considers the proposed application a duly notice, notice public hearing opened on September 2nd, 2021 and closed on October 7th, 2021. Notice of the public hearing was filed in Monroe Town Clerk's Office and published invoices twice. Whereas the public hearing notice was sent to a budding property owners within 100 feet of the subject property. Whereas the Monroe Parks and Rec Commission has reviewed the trail extension and supports the planned extension for the enjoyment of trail users. Whereas the commission reported a favorable recommendation on the A24 referral, now therefore being resolved, the commission in accordance with section 8-2.2 of the zoning regs hereby finds the following respect to this SCP. The proposal seeks approval to permit the extension of the Houston Valley Trail system in compliance with all applicable zoning standards. B, proposed action is consistent with our plan of conservation and development. And be a further resolved, the commission upon motion and second approves the subject SCP 2021, subject to the following, be a further resolved approval subject to that detailed herein and the associated site plans are required to be endorsed by the chairman. Be a further resolved, the commission hereby authorizes the publishing of a notice of decision, considered, consistent with Connecticut's general statute 8-3 CB and the approvals shall be subject to the following, any following modifications and requirement. So Mr. Chairman, a motion and second is in order, let a roll call vote.
I make a motion, I make a motion for SCP 2021-10-1635A approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Ambrosi, second. Anybody want to talk about it? You're not allowed. Nobody wants to talk? Everybody's good? I like it. Call the roll. Tom?
Smurgalino, yes.
Condon, yes. Ambrosi, yes. Mainey, yes.
Westland, yes.
Done deal. That's all we have for deliberations, correct?
That is, I, I just want to acknowledge Scott put a lot of time and effort into this and this is going to be a tremendous asset to the community as.
Yeah, it's gonna be really nice.
Everyone's pretty excited about it. Thank you, Scott.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Subdivision review? We're not doing this one, are we?
No, that's tabled.
Tabled. What this Laurel Estates, that one got tabled also?
That's tabled, yep.
Want to talk about the playground?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the playground organization is replacing the playground at Wolf Park.
The wood one?
Yes, the commission has a copy of it. The footprint is gonna be exactly the same. Staff has recommended to this commission that an SCP copy be required insofar it's a replacement. Footprint stays the same. And the second part of it is, the commission want a site plan or do you want to have staff do a minor site plan in-house?
I'm up for a minor site plan with staff. What is the rest of the commission feel?
I agree.
I agree.
I agree.
You got it, it's all yours, brother. Minor site plan for you, Rick.
Okay.
So we're done with the playground?
Yep.
And we do not require an SCP, correct?
Yep.
The rest of the commission agrees? Yes? Good. Correspondents?
You need to add number 13 bond release, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, do I have?
SDP 2017-02, 35 Corporate Drive.
Oh, I have it right here. We're gonna do a bond review, guys?
Yeah, we need to add that.
Well, we got a vote on it.
After the agenda.
I'm gonna add SDP 2017-02, 35 Corporate Drive for a bond release. Does everybody want to discuss this?
We gotta make a motion to add it?
No, we gotta talk about the.
Well, to add it first.
Add it. Can we have a motion to add this, please? Somebody?
Make a motion to add SDP 2017-02, 35 Corporate Drive for.
We have a second?
Second.
Smurgalino, second. Let's run a vote to add this to discussion. Tom?
Smurgalino, yes.
Condon, yes. Mainey, yes.
Westland, yes.
All right, it's been added to talk about. You wanna go through it, Rick, real quick?
Yeah, the, Scott prepared a report recommending the full release for the subject bond. This was for a site development plan.
Okay.
Staff recommends approval.
Anybody want to talk about it? Anybody?
No.
Nobody? Call motion? Yeah, we're gonna, a motion to release it.
Make a motion to approve the bond release of SDP 2017-02 at 35 Corporate Drive.
Second. Ambrosi, second. All right, call the roll.
Smurgalino, yes.
Condon, yes.
Ambrosi, yes.
Mainey, yes.
Westland, yes.
All right, done. Commissioners report?
Yeah, correspondence, none. Commission reports.
Any commissioners have anything to report?
How's the Panera going?
Good, moving forward. The, well, I might as well jump to my report. Chairman asked for the town plan's report be tabled until the October 21st. I have recommendations in it for the interior lots and some other issues, also the zoning enforcement issues in there and the blight. We have a lot of other things happening, so I'll have that for the October 21st. The chairman asked to participate.
Okey dokey.
It has, the chairman indicated tonight we'll be scheduling another zoning regulations subcommittee.
On the 21st, we're gonna do it. Anybody have anything else?
Yeah, I got something. So the number one question that comes to me ever since I've joined here was, is Pepper Street. What's, like, how much longer are they gonna be, I don't know, it's horrible over there?
Yeah, I'm gonna give a full report, but I'll give you a quick.
Yeah, the 21st.
Okay.
I'll give you a quick report because the, the first electman did it. Major delays because of the utility companies. That resulted in months of delays. The, there will be a pavement down before the winter comes, very important. Aids are pretty crazy right now.
Yeah, it's a, it's on there. You have it every day.
Travelway needs to be paved.
Yes.
So it could be plowed and so there's no problems to the motor vehicles.
But is the grading gonna be done by then? Because I mean, one side of the road is.
Yes. I'm, I'm pleased to announce that all of the personnel for the Grasso Company is there now. They are working.
Yeah, they were there, they're crazy.
Quite a bit. We had a staff meeting today. The chief of police has assigned a police officer.
Well, I had a resident also bring to my attention today, they live on Pepper Street and they were concerned that the trucks that are working on, on that project are, are going by it at a fast rate.
Yeah, and that's why the chief, the chief saw that and he assigned an officer there.
What about directing the trucks to go northbound on Pepper Street?